All right, I'm calling the meeting of the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee to order. The first item on the agenda is public comment on any item not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here for an item not listed on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll keep going. With introductions of the committee members, right now we have with us Supervisor Jerry Bullock and Supervisor Dennis O'Laughlin. I'm the Chair of the Committee, Mary Colar. We may be joined by Supervisors Patrick Miles and Elmatano. Also with us tonight, filling in for our zoning administrator Roger Lane, is Majid Allen. And we have Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Everson and the Director of the Planning and Development Department, Todd Vialante. Also with us this evening are Youth Governance Member Iommi Obese and Sam Fisher will not be here tonight, the other Youth Governance Member. Again, this is a public hearing. The Committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out a white form. They're right over there. If you haven't filled it out and you wish to speak or state a position either for or against, please fill out a form and turn it in to staff. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come up to the Chairs here and to address the Committee. That's the three of us right here. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to three minutes to address the Committee. The order of registrants is the petitioner first, any other persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers for the first time around will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. All speakers will address the Committee. Again, that's three of us up here, not individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. The Committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the Committee. This will give the petitioner and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the Committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the full County Board. If the Committee passes the petition unanimously, your presence at the County Board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you do attend the full County Board meeting. Committee action on conditional use permits is a final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the full County Board. The next County Board meeting is November 30th. The next ZLR Committee meeting is on a Monday, which is unusual for us. It is on Monday, December 18th. Okay, so first petition is rezoned petition 11,207, Feebuck Brothers LLC in the town of Deerfield.
Good evening. My name is Michael Rumpf. I'm the Agent for Feebuck Brothers LLC. The members of the LLC are seated right behind me. We're here this evening requesting a zoning change to create a residential lot in the town of Deerfield. One of the things that we were able to accomplish today is get a highway access permit to 134, and I've emailed that to Mr. Allen.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, Majid?
The town has approved this petition. Staff is recommending, as this is the last split allowed on the farm, that the balance of the A1 exclusive zone lands, which is essentially one tax parcel surrounding the lot that's being created, be restricted, prohibiting further development.
I move approval with the conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, it's approved.
Thank you.
Next is rezoned petition 11,208. It's the Victoria Lodge, Your Revocable Trust, in the town of Christiana.
Hi, I'm Victoria Lodge. I live at 1439 Krabi Drive in Deerfield, and I'm here to basically straighten out some boundary lines that we have in order to, I mean, we've been mowing it and we've been doing all this too, so we just wanted to straighten it and align it out.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add? Great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff simply notes that a two-lot certified survey map would be needed to effectuate the zoning change.
Question for staff?
Yes.
Is that a condition?
It should not be a condition. I know you were planning on doing a certified survey map as part of this proposal.
Yes.
And so it's just a note that, you know, as more of a benefit to the owners to make sure that they understand that it's a requirement.
Okay, very good. I'll make a motion to approve that, second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next is rezoned petition 11,210, Donald Perrell in the town of Vermont.
Dave Perrell.
Perrell, thank you.
Name and address.
4744 Blue Mountains Trail, Black Earth.
So ours does say Donald, but it's...
It's my dad.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I was getting the land from my dad to join in my farm.
Anything else you'd like to add?
It's just a rezon from a buildable site to an ag site.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is recommending a number of conditions and an amendment. As indicated in the report, we're recommending instead of Ag 1, that it go to Ag 4. Saves the hassle of doing a very large certified survey map. This is an existing surveyed lot. Essentially, the intention is here, as Dave indicated, is to add on to his existing farmland to the east, take the development right that's associated currently with this lot and assign it to his dad's lot, which is the westernmost RH lot there on the screen. So the staff recommendations are essentially to make that happen and put some documentation behind it so we know this one's not buildable and the development rights being transferred to his dad's lot.
Would the town do, the town did that?
The town did not have any conditions on this. They are aware of our recommendations. Frankly, I think it's in the owner's best interest to do this so everyone knows how everything happened, that the development rights are not being lost in the show.
With conditions and...
I'll second.
So he has a motion to approve with the conditions. Any discussion?
Just Supervisor Mike. We're doing this under approval because you can't simply wipe away an existing CSM. I mean, you can displace it with a new CSM, so why can't you...
You can displace it with a new certified survey map. Unfortunately, I don't think that that was, that the owners were informed of that at the time of the application, that to do this with going to ag exclusively would mean they'd need to do a minimum 35-acre certified survey lot that includes this land as well as the other...
Yeah, I read that. I was just curious why we can't just render an existing CSM now employed by a rezon. I'm just curious.
So, yeah, so the CSM becomes the legal description of the property, and the only way to get rid of it is either through a court order or to do a different survey on top of it. And so I think this is the most cost-effective, simply, B-to-B.
Right. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. You're welcome. Next is rezoned petition 11,211, Ingrid West in the town of Dunkirk.
So I'm Ingrid West, and I live at 1053 Taylor Lane in Dunkirk, and we're requesting a zoning change from A1 exempt to A2.
Anything else you'd like to add?
We want to build a garage, and we have a mushroom farm, and so we do agricultural work on our property currently, so we'd like to have a bigger barn, you know, that we can use for our business.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff has no conditions.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Next is rezoned petition 212, Stephen Shanacy in the town of Cross Plains.
I'm John Holverson. I'm representing Stephen Shanacy tonight. I'm the Surveyor, actually. He's the second owner of a house, and the fence was off 50 feet in his garage, sits across the lot line. He's got a deed already for the adjacent property, so we're doing a certified survey map to incorporate it into one parcel.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Majid?
We have no town action on this as of yet, I believe, their meeting early December 4th.
Postpone for lack of town action. Second.
We have a motion and a second, postpone due to lack of town action. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's postponed. And so you understand why.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and you're also here for rezon 11,213 People's Community Bank in the town of Black Earth?
Yes, John Holverson from Marina. They're conveying approximately 18 acres of cropland to a farmer, so since it's less than 35 acres, they need to rezone to A4 and a certified survey map.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff has no recommendations.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And if anyone opposed, it's approved. All right, next rezoned petition 214, the Ewing family in the town of Black Earth.
They own approximately 66 acres, and there's a shed on one parcel. It was zoned RH1 years ago. Now they're going to sell off approximately 22 acres, I believe, and get rid of the RH1 zoning to A2 zoning.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
Before I obtain a motion, there's, from the staff report, this is 214, yeah, there's an existing structure that needs to be, either the sanitary needs to be removed, so it's a...
Then when there's a proposal to build a new single-family home, the RH zoning was created to bring that structure into compliance because they've been used historically going back into the national, let's say, early 90s maybe, as a dwelling unit. So they have zoning compliance for it now. Everything's fine with the Ag 2 zoning. It would only be if someone wants to come in and put up a new residence that we'd want to make sure that that structure's then in compliance with the code. So there's, you know, this is more of a note that if and when this issue comes up in the future, we have a record of...
So when they have a new, all right, so when they move or have a new construction, they need to move this or remove this?
And that would be a condition of the zoning permit.
So I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Thank you, Mr. Holverson. Next is rezoned petition 11,215, Coons Construction of Verona LLC in the town of Verona.
Good evening. Hello. Hi, my name is Jessica Vaughn. I work for JST Professional Services, and I'm representing Jim Coons this evening, the applicant. Before the commission this evening is a rezoning request to rezon the property located at 3151 Shady Oak Lane from RH4 to RH4 to allow for a 13-unit condominium development to take place. At this point, we are waiting for action from the Town Board. We're anticipating to see that come through sometime after December 5th, so we are expecting a postponed this evening. As a result of continuing our efforts to work with the town, changes have been made to the materials that have, that you have in front of you this evening, so we'll also be submitting updated materials with the town action sometime after December 5th. I would also like to point out that in my conversation with County Staff, Staff Condition Number 3 will also need to be revised to reflect the new lot areas that have resulted.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? You would like to speak in support? Okay. And I think you filled out a form.
I did.
Are you Brad?
Yes.
Okay. You want to give Brad a chance to come on in? If you'd just tell us who you are, where you are.
Okay, I'm Brad Legred, 7510 Rolling Meadow Road, Verona, Wisconsin. I'm here to speak in both support and opposition. I've lived in that hole for 31 years now, and I've noticed in the last couple of years that the town of Verona and the town of Milton have been gobbling up all the rural farmland for development, and that's been kind of alarming to all of us who have been living in this area for so many years. All of our neighbors have been there for between 20 and 30, 35 years easily. And one of the reasons I'm here is because the town of Verona recently did a survey of all the residents, asking them what you want in your area, and over 80% of the residents said that they want to maintain a rural environment and keep it like it is and have low, low building, dusty. That's why we've been out there for so many years. We like the area. We enjoy living out there. Now, I don't know if this development is a done deal or not. I was going to come here initially to say that we were opposing it. I went to a town of Verona zoning committee meeting back in March and opposed it because just a little west of it, you have a development that just started. There's 21 large lots there, and then you had this one, and there's going to be another development up on Midtown that's just a little southwest of where this development is. Because of Epic, there's a lot of extra congestion, a lot of extra traffic that we never had in the past, and with all this development, that's going to cause even more problems with congestion. But with all that said, I just saw this afternoon that a letter from the Madison zoning people said that they're opposing this because they want to do high-density development in that area. If it is a done deal and if it is going to be developed no matter what, then I strongly support the 13 single-family units. Madison has been circling our area like vultures for years. They've been trying to gobble up our land like crazy, and we, our whole area, nobody wants that at all. So if it is a done deal, if there's going to be development on that 26 acres, we prefer to have the 26 acres developed for 13 single-family condo units. And that's basically based on what we've been hearing from the town of Verona, that we would like to maintain that rural atmosphere. And I do thank you for your time.
And thank you.
And I'm sorry for the confusion for both supporting and opposing. I'm just kind of not sure myself what's going to happen with that rural piece of land.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Majid?
We are awaiting town action as indicated. We expect that to be coming through December 5th meeting.
Move postponement.
I'll second that, just a quick comment, I think, if I recall correctly, that development that the gentleman just referred to, to the west of his property in the north, was also a condo plot that was approved last year, or maybe a year before.
About a year and a half ago.
Tupperton was developed.
Yep.
And if I recall correctly, it was primarily the same situation where Madison was opposed, the town did some ETJ, so to avoid that roadblock, they went with a condominium plot. That's something that we generally don't like to do here, but the Committee sympathized with, empathized with the town and approved that prior condominium plot. Just a quick question for the petitioner. You said the third conditional needs to be revised. Do I take it that you're going to be going smaller than two-acre lots?
Yeah, the town, the town just recently adopted a new policy, and this is part of why things have been kind of evolving throughout the process, is they've been having this policy discussion about densities when it comes to condo plots. Their new policy required or sets the minimum lot area of 1.5 acres per unit for condo developments. And so ours will range from a minimum of 1.5 up to, I believe, almost two.
And just another question. Okay, so the draft preliminary map shows a cul-de-sac, okay. I was just wondering if there's any contemplation made to perhaps rather than having a cul-de-sac, have it connect with the road to the north labeled as Watch Hill Court, just for more road connection and...
So are you thinking, we did contemplate road connections, both to the north and future connections to the south. The town felt that, well, first of all, to the north, it gets a little tricky because of grades and the length it would require to put a curve in the road and to meet grades. And the town felt that also that the limited scale and scope of this development, that connectivity was not something that would be driving the overall design, because it's really a private driveway for 13 residences. If it were, I think that, I think it would be a little bit different if we were talking about more than that.
I'm trying to recall another condo plot. Were there any trails put in there?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, on the motion postponement, further discussion?
I just wanted to look in with one comment. In response to the gentleman who was in support and opposition, I read the City of Madison letter and came to a slightly different conclusion about what Planner Roll was saying. He was talking about, he was speaking about dense construction in the central urban service area, so I don't think he contemplated dense urban development in this location, but rather was contrasting this development with the kind of development you see in the immediate vicinity of where we are now. So just kind of a nuance, but I wouldn't want you to come away thinking that the City of Madison has designed higher rises in this area.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of postponement due to lack of town action, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's postponed. Okay, thanks. Do we have anyone here for 11,216? Bruce Hollaback, the town of Verona. Okay, did you fill out a form?
A white form? No, because I thought since I was, I was only filling out a white form if I was in...
Yeah, you still need to fill out a form. You're Bruce?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, yeah.
I'll take care of that.
We'll listen to you, and then if you'll fill out the form, it's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
So Bruce Hollaback, location is 6636 Purcell Road, and the current zoning is RH2 and RH3. And the change requested is to move the shared property line of the two lots to the east, thus changing Lot 2 from RH2 to RH3, and Lot 4 from RH3 to RH2.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Yes, thank you. Next is rezoned petition 11,217, Stolen Farms in the town of Albion.
Yes. My name is Peggy Stolen Luther, and I'm representing Stolen Farms, Inc. My address is 471 Arbog Road, Edgerton, which is town of Albion. We are asking respectfully for a rezon from A1 exclusive to RH3 for the creation of one residential lot. And as a, I don't know if there's a minor or a major point of clarification, Stolen Farms, Inc. used to have farmland until three days ago. The farmland was sold at auction, and it's our desire to keep some land for our children if they so desire to build a home in the future. If not, we will rent it to the farmer who now owns the farmland.
And did you get a chance to fill out a form?
I did not.
Yeah, if you had filled out a form, too.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing else.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Majid?
Town has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's, is that opposition?
Not opposed. I'm voting in favor.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you all.
And if you had filled out a form...
I will, certainly.
Are you here with CUP 02398?
Yes.
Great, okay. Just tell us who you are.
My name is Ron Combs. I'm the Surveyor on the project. Mr. Thalicker is unable, I'm sorry, we're on...
Yeah? You were here for...
1121. I was here for a vote, yeah.
11218.
Okay, all right, I got you. You came up for 11,218. I saw Ron Combs, and, okay, you, go ahead, tell us again on petition 11,218.
Yes, Mr. Thalicker was unable to make it because of a health issue that he's experiencing right now, so I've asked, he asked me to represent him tonight. This is a rezon from A1 exclusive to, I believe it's R...
A2.
A2H, for those existing buildings with the grain guns, and there's an existing residence on that parcel also.
Okay, again, just, so you checked available for information that was on 11,217, but you're actually speaking in support for 11,218.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's why. Okay. Anything else you'd like to add for 11,218?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Majid?
Town will be taking this up on December 5th.
Move postponement.
We have a motion and a second to postpone due to lack of town action. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's postponed. Thank you. All right, now we got CUP 02398. Dolores Coquinos in the town of Dunn.
I live at 4447 Goodland Park Road in Madison in the town of Dunn, and I'm requesting to utilize my residence as a bed breakfast.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Do you know who filled this out?
For 2398.
It doesn't have a name on it.
Did I not put my name on it?
One has your name. One has your name on it.
Oh, that's me.
One doesn't have any. Okay. So, Daniel. Daniel Catlin?
Catlin, that's you?
Yes. Did you wish to speak in support?
Well, I decided, well, I, sure, I will. Do you need anything? Do I come up there?
You can come up, please. All right.
I'm a neighbor, I live, Daniel Catlin, I live at 4489 Goodland Park Row. We're just, just here to speak in support of it.
Great.
Oh, here in the corner.
What's that?
Here in the corner.
Right in the corner, yeah.
I didn't mean to come to the corner.
Very good. We like that. We like support. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Ajit?
Town has approved this petition with a number of conditions, limiting the days of operation to Thursday through Sunday. I'm sorry, we're going to lose our slideshow. No more than one non-family employees, employee, no more than six guests.
Full approval of the six conditions. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thank you. Okay. Do we have anyone for 11,141? And it is from previous meetings, so we don't take testimony on items from previous meetings, but on rezone, 11,141, what?
We have an ordinance.
Well, thank you. Yep, yep, it's right there. Go ahead.
So this is really just a technical amendment to the County Farmland Preservation Plan. Unfortunately, the map probably tells the story the best, and you have it in your packets. So these are areas that, because of changes in town, comprehensive plans are no longer in areas planned for farmland preservation, and under the state law, we need to take them out of our farmland preservation and as farmland preservation area. So again, a technical amendment to the county farmland preservation.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance amendment to chapter 82. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Okay. All right, again, moving on to zoning map amendments and conditional use permits from previous meetings, and again, it's for the committee's discussion and deliberation, and we'll only call on people if committee members would like to do so. So 11,141?
So this was one for which we did not have town action at the time, proposing to create a single residential lot around some of the different buildings. The issue had been that the applicant didn't file with the town. He has since done so, and the town has approved it. We're recommending an amendment from not, instead of the RH1, to go to the A21 district, and the reason being that has a greater allowance for building coverage, and with the existing Ag buildings, they need that accommodation in that district. So we would recommend approval with the amendment to A21.
We have a motion and a second to approve as amended, I assume. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. And you'll get that back to the petitioner?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next is rezone petition 11,186. The applicant is Kenneth Paris, but it's Mark Purcell in the Town of Burke. Registered, available to speak and support are Mark Purcell, Mary Beth Parento, Alicia Purcell, excuse me. Available for information is Stephen Burt of the Town of Burke, here to speak, and that's it. Okay, Ajit?
So the, the town has denied this petition, and at the meeting on October 10th, the committee postponed action and essentially directed staff contact the town to see if they would be willing to reconsider. We did that, and they declined. So that's it in a nutshell. I do believe you have received a letter from the attorney representing the applicant, which is in your packet. That's our latest.
I will move with my denial for lack of consistency with the town comprehensive plan, inconsistent, incompatible land uses according to town policies, and potential conflicts or complaints regarding traffic noise and so forth.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to deny based on it doesn't comply with the town plan and the other items in Supervisor Miles's motion, and you concur with all the items in the motion. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the denial due to the reasons stated, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the denial? No. Okay. So you understand why it's the comprehensive plan that the town has?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have denied it tonight as well. Okay, thank you.
Was that uneventful? Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to, we have rezone 11,209.
So this again was one that had been postponed due to lack of town action at the October public hearing. The town has since approved the petition with a condition that the soil classification on the properties be verified by county land and water resources, which I believe has already occurred, but it is a condition that they've requested.
I'll make a motion to approve with the town's staff condition.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, staff did have a recommendation as this last split. Thank you. We have a lot of activity this month.
Yep.
Thank you.
Your second? We have a motion and a second to approve with town staff conditions. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that's approved as well. Next.
Who seconded that? I did.
A lawful. Next, we have CUP 02396, Thomas Martenson in the Town of Rutland. It's a communication tower. And again, this is from a previous meeting, wishing to speak in support is Michael Icapetti.
Last name. Yeah, Michael Icapetti.
Okay, very good. Wishing to speak in support, Jim Germaine.
Germaine.
Germaine, wishing to speak in support. And we have opposition from Martin Cook, opposition from Lori Cook, registering. Also here this evening wishing to speak in support is Dan O'Callahan. And you just wrote me this? Did you write it earlier?
Just today.
Okay, thank you. And did you write an email? Okay. So I assume, what, you brought copies to everybody?
That's right.
Okay. So again, this is from previous meetings?
Right.
Okay, so we're going to get our update from staff first.
So this petition was postponed at the public hearing for a number of reasons. We did not have the completed third-party RF, radio frequency engineering report. The town had not yet acted. As indicated in the update, we, the town took up the petition on November 9th, tabled it again, since we did not have the third-party report, there are a number of issues identified with the proposal. And also, as indicated, there is a timeline that's imposed by the state law that governs some of these activities. And that, we're facing that deadline on November 29th. Staff had asked for them to agree to an extension so that we could address the various issues that had come up with this petition. We did not have that at the time this report was produced last week. Again, as staff is indicating in the recommendations, we're recommending denial, and I would stand by that recommendation based on the number of issues that we've identified, and I'm not entirely certain that these are things that can be overcome. I'm happy to go through the list of the recommendations if that would be helpful to you.
Yes, please.
Sure. So there was some confusion surrounding the rationale behind the proposal. In other words, we heard at the public hearing that this tower was, the site was chosen primarily to forward the objective that AT&amp;T has, to provide rural broadband internet access to an underserved area of the Town of Rutland that's located over a mile and a half to the east. That was frankly news to us. There was, I believe, a single sentence in the application materials where they indicated that this was part of their Connect America Fund II objectives. Again, that's a fund that the federal government has made available to help spur the deployment of broadband internet in underserved rural areas, which we wholeheartedly support. But we did not have any data to back it up. We weren't sure, you know, how does this, a map might be helpful here. And unfortunately, what I don't have for you, and we just did not have the time to produce this, is a map showing, which you can sort of make it out here, I believe this, actually, no, it's in further east of that than that. The target area for the rural broadband deployment is over a mile and a half to the east of this site. The yellow there indicates the search ring, actually, this is an amended search ring that they had provided to us as part of this application. That's one of the main requirements, is to identify where do they need a site to be located. We did receive a letter from an AT&amp;T engineer saying that they chose this site outside of this presumably optimal location, and that it would still fulfill their needs. And yet, we also have received information, you know, from Mr. Icapetti by email saying, well, that search ring is three years old and shouldn't be considered part of this petition. So that's one of the difficulties that staff has faced, is trying to understand what are the main objectives of this site, if it is rural broadband, to serve this underserved area that the federal government has identified and AT&amp;T has received funding for, again, over a mile and a half to the east. There's an existing tower that's much closer than this site that has space for co-location on it that would undoubtedly provide better service and more penetration into this underserved area for rural broadband. Again, an objective that the town wholeheartedly supports, and the county does as well. So again, our engineer, the third-party engineer that conducts the technical review, simply, and you have this in your packet too, they provided a memo saying this could not analyze this proposal for lack of the appropriate information to do so. So again, as the staff is indicating in the, in the report, the need for the tower at the location and the requested height hasn't been validated. That's what we rely on the engineer to do for us. We have a concern that the selected site is outside of the search ring that they submitted to us. You know, again, we're over a half a mile outside the quarter-mile search ring they submitted, three-tenths of a mile outside of the half-mile search ring that they provided. And again, that, that search ring represents the area within which they need to locate a tower in order to achieve the mobile service objective. We have, of course, the competing or complementary objective, depending on how you look at it, of providing rural broadband internet services to an underserved area. We just simply haven't received the information that would demonstrate that it's going to accomplish that objective, or that it would accomplish the objective in a better manner, and not that this is something that is frankly part of the analysis, but given the interest in this particular issue in this county and in this area of having internet access, high-speed internet, internet access, and the objectives of the funding program that they're operating under, it would seem that they need to make a stronger case that this site is better than other alternatives that may currently exist. Again, these two objectives that they've identified seem to be, you know, you've got the coverage objective for mobile service to the, to the west and the broadband to the east, and it's unclear that they'll be able to achieve either in a, in a meaningful manner. At least we have not had the technical data to back that up. The applicant hasn't evaluated the feasibility of co-location to achieve the rural broadband obligations and objectives for the underserved area, again, as identified by the FCC as part of this CAP 2 project. And that's a big concern to us, again, that if we're going to be talking about rural broadband deployment in a, in a, in an area like this, it would be helpful to know how, again, to the, to the layperson, the community that is hosting this site, how does this achieve the objective better than a site that's over a mile closer to the designated area? Is there a proposal to expand or site equipment on that, on that existing tower and to co-locate there as well? We simply don't know, and this has been part of the problem we've had with this application. We also had some concerns about the proposal's consistency with the town comprehensive plan. This is an area that the town has identified as medium-density residential, an area that might serve as a receiving area for a future transfer of development rights program. In addition, and this is a consideration that frankly we overlooked in the initial analysis of this, the town plan requires or counts cell towers as a development right under their density limitation. That limitation applies throughout the town, not only in the Ag preservation area, but also in this medium-density residential area. The Martenson property was tapped out of its development rights, and there's a deed restriction that says they've got no more development rights. Again, I don't know that that's something that cannot be overcome if we're able to validate the need for the tower in this particular location at that requested height. Number of other concerns with regard to the proposal in terms of the potential impact on neighboring properties. If you look at the standards and the ordinance that we're to be evaluating, conditional use permits against, you know, that standard number two under 10.2552H, uses value and enjoyment of property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted would in no foreseeable manner be substantially impaired or diminished by the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use. We did have some folks come out in opposition. I understand that same opposition was presented at the town meeting. So there's that issue. And then there are also standards for any proposal that a conditional use in the Ag exclusive, this is under state law, that there are a number of additional requirements and findings that need to be made. One of them is that the use and its location in the Ag district are reasonable and appropriate considering alternative locations. So again, that's another concern that staff had identified, that there may in fact be other alternative locations that would not run against that standard of the ordinance. So that's it in a very large nutshell in terms of the recommendations that staff had.
Thank you. And for the petitioner, who will speak for the petition?
I will.
Okay. Attorney O'Callahan will speak, so Supervisor Miles.
So Ajit, of the issues you went through, it sounds like some of it is, a good portion of it is for lack of information, or, yeah, I guess the, corrects my question is, the time extension that they're agreeing to in this letter, is there, is it your opinion that, that there's issues here that cannot be resolved in extending time for them to either get more information, or do you think this is a situation where they need to come in basically with a whole new map position? new application?
I, the latter, quite frankly. I've been aware of this site since at least May, if not earlier. I've been advising them on concerns related to citing in that particular location with the neighborhood being adjacent and so on. As I said, there's been, after the meeting on November 9th where the town postponed action, and were unable to get the information needed to complete the RF review and asked for the extension, and were declined that extension until now the 11th proverbial hour at this meeting, it concerns me. I mean, the state law is designed to say, well, if no action is taken, it's approved by default. It appears that, you know, we've been given a lot of conflicting information on a site. Frankly, we've got AT&amp;T, I respect the need for them to provide and build out their network. I can't tell you, I've lost count of the number of tower sites that I have assisted in getting cited throughout Dane County, and this one has been exceedingly complicated. And I think it raises a lot of alarms. And, you know, when we hear about rural broadband, again, I'm all in support, we want to assist and facilitate that. When you're telling me you're citing a location to provide broadband, the folks that live in this neighborhood are already served by Charter and other providers. The underserved area is further east.
Right, right.
So again, I don't know that even if that information were provided, that it would, you know, we did a brief analysis as quick and dirty as we could in the limited time we had. I mean, my hope had been we would have had an agreement to extend the timeframe before this meeting so that we could get to the bottom of it. But the more we dug and the closer we look at this, the more problematic it appears, quite frankly.
Just one quick final question at the moment. Not particular to this petition, without any of our circumstances in which we're considering a cell tower proposal, you cite some of our conditional use standards, there's some areas being problematic. And I, if not like I need some re-education after the most recent state law changes as far as what we can and cannot consider in approving or denying such CFPs. The couple of these I thought were falling outside of our authority as far as like aesthetics and.
I cannot deny solely on aesthetics that it may factor into a broader decision. And as I said, if this were hinging on one issue, I would completely agree with you. We wouldn't necessarily have a leg to stand on, but there is becoming a, like I said, you could certainly agree if you so choose to extend the timeframe, and we'll do our best to work with them. You know, but again.
The reason I ask, though.
The concern is that.
My whole project applications, it seems like there's enough issues here and problems with a given location that, and lack of consideration of co-location that. We need to go back to square one.
Right. And just for, to give you some other perspective too, the site that's at the center of that yellow ring there was approved, I think, back in 2013. Now, AT&amp;T was not able to build on that site because of some issues with the being able to install a foundation suitable for the tower of the height that they were looking at, which is 150 feet. That site was approved with little to no controversy. We did get something, I don't know how we would verify it, that they exhausted all the possibilities within that area. I'll give you an example, in the case of the last tower we approved in town of Springdale, the town raised the same issue. Well, what about, did you check with this property? Did you check with that property? In the immediate vicinity? And there was some conflicting information. They actually went back and produced an affidavit saying, you know, absolutely, we did look at these other properties as alternatives. We've not received anything to that extent on this site. But my point in raising this is that that site lay dormant for, you know, a number of years. I mean, 2013 is 2017 now. And the concern is that these sites end up creating an inertia all their own. And you've got a tower company that is representing on this petition, their money is in building towers. AT&amp;T has objectives, again, which we respect, we understand, there are federal and state guidelines that govern how and what we can and cannot do with those applications. Again, completely respected, we evaded and assisted in these, you know, throughout the county. But what we have here is something that, again, is just does not pass muster. And having been on the docket, I mean, if I could document the amount of time that county staff has spent in reviewing and seeking additional information and corresponding and so on in this, we are frankly, you know, we're subsidizing a poorly selected location. You select a site outside of your identif, you know, your self-identified search ring. Give us something with competing objectives and don't come good with the information to validate it. It creates, I'm afraid, a terrible precedent that, you know, imagine the folks in that underserved area thinking, hey, great, we're going to get rural broadband, and we have no way of validating whether or not that's going to occur. If this was the main objective of AT&amp;T, they should be singing it from the mountaintops as to how many households they're going to serve and how dare we stand in the way of that getting accomplished. And we just have not seen that information. I just, I did, again, when you've got sites closer and they've not evaluated or provided information saying, oh, yeah, we looked at that, we can't do it, here's why. That's one of the reasons you can deny under the state law is for failure to evaluate co-location opportunities in their area. We're questioned about where the search ring actually lies. Again, a lot of things just not adding up, and that was the basis of our recommendation.
Supervisor Loffler.
You mentioned co-locate. This tower's going to be 150 feet.
This one is 198, I believe.
198. And there's an existing one a mile and a half to the east.
Correct. A little over a mile.
How much better, and I didn't hear any of this, but how much better service is this tower that's going to be built at 150 feet or 180, whatever it is, going to improve the people in that community? Is it going to help them at all?
Well, again, it depends on the objectives that are being accomplished here, and we understand they're trying to accomplish dual objectives. The mobile service, the cellular service gap that they have is located to the west.
Yeah.
The broadband service area, their target area that they're obligated to provide service to under this CAP II project is, you know, close to two miles to the east.
And what about the tower that's a mile and a half east? Can't that provide broadband?
It would certainly seem that it's a viable candidate to locate equipment on to provide that service at a much more effective, again, to the layperson.
I understand.
Something we're unaware of from a technological standpoint.
Well, there was one up in Windsor, and it created some problems with the community. I'll tell you that. It got to the point where neighbors weren't talking to neighbors. But I don't think this turkey is cooked all the way yet to serve it. I'm talking because we had Thanksgiving.
Did you think they all picked it up?
You all picked it up.
Picked it up, put your land down.
So I'm, I'm not thoroughly convinced yet that A, there's a need, B, there's protections for the community, and C, the service that it will provide is going to be adequate for what it's going to do. And the, the, the map has changed since 2013 as far as residential lots have gone in there.
I'm, we'd have to do an analysis of that. Again, the irony being that the site that they got approved in 2013 was very non-controversial, cited in Old Cory.
Right.
Which, by the way, that Cory owner apparently showed up at the town meeting saying, hey, I'm still open for business if you can find another site that works on my property for your foundation. But again, I, you know, it's not, that's neither here nor there for our.
Right. They're looking for a new entity, I understand that.
Supervisor McCallum.
Sorry. I, well, one comment I had was, Matt Perry, you made a comment about who would testify? And since this is not a public.
Oh, who would speak for, you know, I just, who to call on? I was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I thought you were looking for a motion to.
No, no, I wanted to know who to call on representing AT&amp;T and the petition.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. I would say one thing is that the, I, the people sitting at the table are going to, I mean, hopefully, under state statute. But I think, without having it in front of me, I think the state statute pretty clearly says that a town can't simply say no, as Majid indicated, they can't say no based on aesthetics. Essentially, we can't consider some of the issues that we usually consider in a conditional use permit. But I do think that, and I think there's language in there that states that you can't just send them away, they have to have an alternative. But here, they clearly do have an alternative based on Majid's comments about co-location possibilities. And so I would be prepared to move denial, but I'll leave my colleagues to, I'll let some of the conversation continue a little bit. I also had a question for Majid. Is it possible that even if we approve this, that the federal funds might fall through based on the fact that they don't, in your analysis, meet the requirements for the rural broadband?
There are, there are requirements that the, that is associated with the funding that they received, that they have to achieve certain levels of, you know, sort of service provision within the target area on a timeline. So I want to say it's like you have to achieve 40%. I believe there's like 900 and some households and businesses within this underserved area. That's not just town of Rutland, there's areas of town of Dunn, other parts of southeastern and eastern Dane County that are in this target area for that rural broadband deployment. But ultimately, I want to say it's 2021 by which they have to complete the deployment into the target area. So I don't, in terms of them having funds that are held hostage or something like that, I believe that in fact the funding is probably frankly nominal by comparison to what they're accustomed to dealing with. But again, it's, if that were the case, again, the issue that, one of the big concerns aside from all the issues that we have with this is that this has been in the hopper for months. And, you know, I know the committee places a lot of emphasis on, you know, well, how did things go to the town? What happened to the town? Town tabled it, they needed more information, and here we were in essentially, you know, being forced into this position that, you know, we're not getting the information we need, and if you don't do anything, it's approved by default. So in some respects, the hand has been forced. But again, as it stands currently, like I said, I stand by the recommendations that we have. I just am concerned that having had, and again, we're going back to May, this isn't something that from the time of application on. So that's, that's the other element of this, is that we want to do our part in this. I mean, I can assure you that. Like I said, I do this constantly. I'm happy to work with them. But, you know, like I said, these sites end up taking inertia and a, you know, become their own reason, you know, whether or not the service is optimal, whether or not it's the ideal location. And these things, like I said, have not been validated. My concern is that we've had all this time, and if we don't have it now, I'm not sure we're ever going to have it.
Okay. Attorney Loffler, I have your letter then, and we all have a copy. And so as has, as has been stated, it could, in a sense, be approved because the state and the federal government says we've reached the end of our time. But I see your letter, you're willing to extend the time. You're taking the position, in spite of what state law says, that you're willing to extend the deadline for action on the petition.
That's correct. It's actually written into state law that with the petitioner's agreement, the deadline can be extended. So it's not inconsistent at all with what the law provides. We're actually agreeing to that. And, you know, to be honest.
Is this enough, writing this letter? That's, that's it?
Yeah. Something in writing. And we could have done a better job communicating earlier. We filed the petition in August, and it wasn't clear to us until we got the consultant's November 22nd letter clarifying some of the information that was needed in order to answer the questions. And that's, that's on us. It's ultimately our responsibility. So we're agreeing to an extension that would allow us to do that, and we appreciate all the time that's gone in thus far. But I would agree with Supervisor Loffler that I don't think our turkey is cooked yet. And we'd like an opportunity to respond to the letter we got last week and continue working on it because we think that there are some issues that we need to fix in terms of communication, and we can do that.
Do you, why isn't it farther east?
So I think one of the confusing things here is that the tower is intended to serve two purposes. It's intended to serve this coverage area to the, to the west and this broadband area to the east. That's where there are multiple search rings. And, you know, if there's confusion about that, again, that's on us because it's ultimately our responsibility to provide whatever information you need to evaluate the application. So I think it's clear to us now the types of search rings that staff would like to receive in order to give to the consultant so they can evaluate both of these purposes. But ultimately, it's because there are two purposes for the tower that we think this site is the right site to serve both locations, both the search areas from one location. And we think that's actually consistent with the county's ordinance, which encourages, you know, modernization of technology, but in a way that limits the number of tower sites spread throughout the county. So we've got one tower site here that at this height, we're confident would serve both search areas adequately, service areas adequately, and would achieve the requirement that we need for this rural broadband initiative, which is, what, Jim, 10 megabits per second?
Correct.
So the residents there would certainly see a dramatic improvement in the speeds that they're able to, to experience.
And so did the third-party engineer technical review get completed? Go ahead.
No. And just to be clear, this wasn't the first letter from Cityscape. There was a string of emails going back and forth between the consultant and Michael and others at SAC asking for the information. You know, there was, you know, frankly, a bit of an oversight here where we didn't realize, geez, you know, this doesn't add up with the search ring and the location that was selected. And frankly, we got a lot of sort of generic responses, and I just, I find it very hard to understand how a site located in this spot at that height. And one of the concerns that the consultant had noted in these exchanges, and again, so I want you to know that staff is trying to do our job to make sure that this thing is prepared and cooked by the time it gets to you. And literally, you know, your staff was here, you know, all day Wednesday, working on these things, trying to cook these things so that, you know, I was placed in a position of having to be here because of unwillingness to agree to extend the timeframe. So as I said, and when we're now at the 11th hour and we're still hearing the same generalities when we know, again, I'm all in favor of co-location and minimizing tower proliferation and achieving these very laudable objectives, you know, I just, perhaps some epiphany will occur and we'll be given this information, but when your staff's been dogging them for it for weeks and it's not been provided, you know, again, we're, we're at a place where, well, you can only ask so many times not get what you need before maybe what we need doesn't exist. So that's the, that's the difficulty we're finding right now.
Supervisor Miles.
So even if we had, the RF engineer had the information needed to evaluate this, and it was a workable site, you brought up a point earlier that, that there's the density issue, the policy, the use policy there that we weren't aware of before. So isn't it all a moot point if we don't have, if there isn't a density rate to do that development there?
One could argue that, absolutely. But again, it would be perhaps a, I would say, a stronger argument to make. So the state law prohibits us from having an ordinance that effectively prohibits the placement of a tower in a particular area. And if we knew the search ring was encompassing of, you know, this area and perhaps a broader swath around it, then, and one would have to believe that it must, I mean, if they've gone that far outside the ring that they themselves identified. they've gone that far outside the ring that they themselves identified, there must be other potentially viable options within that area. And that, yeah, it just so happens that the selected site is in an area that's deed restricted and they've used up their development rights. I don't think we've even gotten that far down the road with the, with the town's analysis of this. I mean, it's, but yeah, I mean, you raise a good point that that requirement of the town plan, this would be inconsistent with it. And we pointed it out.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes. Majid, why is the town dragging Murphy? Any idea?
Well, the town had been waiting on the RF review, the radio frequency report, and so the engineer is saying, well, we can't produce the report until we get the information to validate the need. One of the concerns they had is, you know, is the tower need to be this high? What are the signal level penetrations? I mean, there's all this technical stuff that this is why we have them advise you on these. So it's the chicken and egg issue that, well, they can't produce the report, we can't take a decision or come to a decision without the review. And so this is where we find ourselves. And again, this has been months in the making where, you know, we could have been a lot further down this road.
Thanks. I've got a question for the petitioner who wants to answer it. You've heard the staff report here and you're asking for basically two months to, to continue making this a workable project. What's going to change? I mean, I'm not hearing a lot of positive information coming from staff.
Yeah, I think, if I could address the concern, I think there are a lot of unanswered questions. That's my takeaway from, from the staff report. And I have to say, I respect tremendously Majid's professional experience and the work that he's put into this application. And again, we could have done a better job communicating and responding to the requests. There was some confusion on our part, quite frankly, about the request for the search rings because they had been provided. We would like the opportunity to respond to this November 22 memo, provide the information that we think is necessary and is being sought by the county's consultant. We're quite confident that this is a workable site. The company would not have put in the resources that they have exploring and developing the site if it wasn't workable. So we're quite confident that the technical data will support the selection of the site and we're happy to provide that and whatever other information would be useful in evaluating the site. We haven't had, had an opportunity yet to talk to the town about the split issue in their comp plan. We'd like that opportunity. We think we can do that in December. Ordinarily, a petition like this, you would just say, you know, you guys aren't ready. You know, we're going to table this, you know, go back, do some more work on this. It's not ready for primetime yet. The only complicating factor here is the state law that would, you know, grant presumptive approval to an application that's been pending for longer than 90 days. That, we're up against that clock, it expires tomorrow. And I can tell you that we'll continue pursuing the site, even if that means we have to withdraw this application and refile it. We think, you know, frankly, it's in a more efficient use of everyone's time if we agree to extend the deadline, continue working on it, with our apologies to staff for having gotten to this point without answering all of their questions and that we will ultimately get there. And if we come back in January and we haven't answered all of these questions and they still exist, then we think at that point, it'd be appropriate to, for the committee to, you know, take action on the substance of the application. We're just not there yet.
Okay, but would you have, we could assume before the end of January, hopefully in December, we would have more information that would address the issues that are documented in the staff recommendations?
Absolutely. We'll respond point by point to each of the concerns that were raised.
And everything's here? There's quite a bit here, so.
Yeah, that's.
And anything else that should come up from staff? Again, that's our obligation is to respond to these informational requests and we'll do that to the best of our ability.
Supervisor Loughlin?
Well, I, you know, I think our, our clients who have made this application have expressed their apologies for where we're at at this point. So I'm willing to give them the necessary time through this deadline. I think it's January 18th.
We suggested the end of January, January 31st.
Well, we have a meeting, what, a meeting date in January? Where are they? I think we might have two. I think we should name a date.
Our, so our meetings in January are the 9th and the 23rd.
23rd.
And did you choose January 31st for like 90 days or you just went to the end of the month?
To give town for the same meeting.
Yeah, and to, we thought that would provide time for the information to be exchanged, the town to act, and then to get back in front of the county.
Well, let's say January 23rd.
Yeah.
And so, I assumed you were making a motion?
A motion to postpone until January 23rd.
Was that a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone until January 23rd. The petitioner wants to work with staff addressing all the issues that are in our packet and willing, if there are more, if you would communicate that, I know you will. Further discussion, Supervisor McCallum?
I would just thank Majid for his good work and realize, well, for one thing, I was remiss in saying that I didn't have the ordinance in front of me, the statute in front of me because I did have some, apologies for that. And also that the six points for denial are well-written and well-thought-out and I recommend that you write in the seventh one that the town comprehensive plan indicates that there wouldn't be enough supports to support them.
Please do.
And so we, we won't, we won't waste a lot of discussion writing a motion to.
You're welcome. Any further discussion?
No, I just, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say I'll be, although you know, postpone it, not because I, issue, I mean, normally I would be perfectly okay with giving folks time, but to the point that Supervisor McCallum just stated, the inconsistency with the density policy is problematic in terms of how we can approve it regardless of whether or not it's the technical standards for providing tolerant wildlife service.
Further discussion on the motion?
No, I was just going to add that if the petitioner can't address all seven concerns that staff has indicated, it's very doubtful that I would be a favorite of this petition, even in January.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone until January 23rd? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
And we have, it's three to two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next, plats and certified survey maps.
Yeah, the first one is a four-lot certified survey map located in the town of Bristol. Current zoning for this farm property is A1, so there's no associated regional petition. And so therefore, the land division application is before you, for action. Just to provide a little background here, there are some sensitive environmental features that are located on the proposed Lot 4. However, Lot 4 does have an existing residential building as well as farm buildings. From what I understand, those buildings are going to be removed and then any new development will be subject to shoreline floodplain zoning. Pam Andros has looked this over with regards to the comp plan review and has found that there are no, no objections. Just to kind of summarize what she states, because this proposal is only creating two buildable lots, it is consistent with the town and county comprehensive plans. So the existing development on Lot 4, that proposed Lot 3, those two lots will be tied together. The only reason why they're divided is because of the town road. The only two new lots will be Lots 1 and Lots 2, so staff is suggesting that a deed restriction be recorded that states Lots 1 and 2 cannot be further divided as there are no more building splits. And then as well as a deed restriction that combines Lots 3 and 4, so they cannot be individually separated.
Supervisor Miles?
I just have a question for. So is there, outside of, outside of this property being divided with the CSN, is there, the existing farms, are still existing land to that farm outside of this?
No.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about deed restricting that side?
Yeah, exactly. Basically, from what I understand, this proposal settles on the state, from what I understand.
Okay, thanks. Then I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve for their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
The next one is a final plat located in the town of Milton, Tumble Down Farm, 41 residential lots with six outlots, a little over 50 acres. I've outlined a number of conditions that were approved with a preliminary plat. I did get verification from the surveyor with regards to Outlet 3. It's just kind of a remnant parcel that exists between what they're creating, between the road right of way and adjacent property to the south. And the surveyor does have a note about existing development, or, I'm sorry, future development. And so I did ask the surveyor to remove that note just to, so there's no further confusion in the future. Otherwise, all, all the other conditions are standard.
I'll recommend conditional approval.
Second.
Excuse me. We have a motion and a second for the conditional approval discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Okay, we took care of the ordinance amendment and now we have 2017 AT485 residential site plan approval in the town of Dane. Douglas Lucasworth is here, should we have any questions?
Thanks for your patience. You're welcome. I was apologizing, I told him, I had the presence of mind, I didn't know where the discussion would go so long on the tower. We could have invited him up here.
Stuff happens, just not worth getting upset about because it wouldn't fix anything. Douglas A. Lucasworth, 7171 Old 113 Road, Dane, Wisconsin, and I'm requesting, let's see what, I want to build a house and I guess because the new house is going to be more than 100 feet from the old house, it's going to require some approval. I also need to point out a few errors. May I approach screen?
Yeah, one or two.
The current, the show location for the house in the septic system is incorrect. The septic system is going to, we have it, oh, Leachfield already put in here and the house is going to be down here. So it in no way impacts existing field.
Are we sure we're over 100 feet away?
Yes, we are.
Okay, all right.
We are.
Okay.
225 feet.
Okay. That's a forgivable error.
Any basis for that?
And the only other thing was a recommendation for removal of existing residents within 30 days. I've spoken with staff and they agree six months as the town agreed to would be adequate because moving's going to be a challenge.
It apparently also might have, you know, used the old house for training for the fire department too, so we have no issue with it. It's, you know, just one of those follow-up items we got to do. So if the town's fine with six months, that's, that's fine.
Remove approval of the site plan with the window of six months for removal of the old existing.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the residential site plan and the up to six months for. You're welcome. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved, so thank you. Again, today's House will appreciate it.
Good luck moving.
Thank you.
I hope that's all they burned down.
I mean, somebody's been saving in the house for 100 years, so there's a lot of stuff. Any other business?
We adjourned.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned.
So.
Yes.